Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the planning board meeting for August 7th, 2025. First up for discussion will be technology concept plan. Nobody, oh, I'm sorry. You got me already. Start with introductions.
I'm Pamela Berman.
Ben McClure.
Michael Page.
Dave Robson.
Steve O'Neal.
Chaz Doughty.
David Nader with T E C.
Adam Costa, town council.
Okay, perfect. Technology drive, no show.
I don't believe they're in attendance.
Next one is 25 Ingles Road. Anybody for them tonight?
Are they being continued?
They're being continued?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue 25 Ingles Road to our next meeting on 21st of August.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Next up, 500 Potash Hill Road, Mass Crane. Minor field changes are proposed in order to avoid installing the drainage infrastructure in proximity to existing underground utilities detected during the site preparation work. And this is continued from June 5th, 2025. If you want to introduce yourself and...
Casey Ferrera with Howard St. Hudson, civil engineer on the project. Like you said, we were back here on June 5th. At that time, we were in the middle of responding to peer review and getting a clean peer review. Just real quick overview of the updates would be to avoid conflicting with existing underground utilities, we decided to reroute some of the drainage to a subsurface system, which is basically on the backside of the site, has been peer reviewed by T E C. And at this time, I believe is a clear peer review. We received that back just after that June 5th meeting. One of the only outstanding comments was to provide landscaping in the area where we were taking pavement away and adding in grassed area, or what was originally supposed to be grass. So what we ended up doing in the latest plan set was saying that every piece of landscaping that is being removed from the curb island that we are reducing will be transplanted to the grassed area at the frontage, where we are providing new grassed area. In the event that any of that landscaping died or did not make the transplant, we'd have to replace it in kind and in quantity. So that sums up pretty much the changes since the last time that you've seen this. Actually, I believe I presented that same spiel at the first one, or the last meeting, but that's the last update.
Okay. Chaz, do you have anything?
Uh, no. I'm good. Thank you very much for the landscaping, by the way.
Absolutely.
Nope. Good.
And I have nothing. I've been through the site. I walk it every morning, so keeping an eye on you guys. No, it looks good up there, though. And you have done an extensive amount of planting, so
Yes.
Keep up the good work. I'm sure you're just waiting for the curb to be set now in the spots that it needs to be finished.
Yep, so there's some, yep, some interior work to get done, just on the changing out the lighting and stuff like that, but everything's gonna get done. I think it's gonna be prepped up to get final pavement pretty soon, once we can get the drainage system set down.
Yep. Excellent. Alright.
Do you want to vote for the minor changes? Chaz, you want to make a motion?
I make a, I get a motion, Chaz, if somebody for...
Did we want to have Dave?
I thought he just said...
He gave thumbs up.
Oh, okay. Good. Alright. So we would need a motion?
Yes.
Minor changes.
I make a motion that the minor field changes proposed in this order be approved for... Do we have a site plan? Do we have a date on the new plan?
Do we have a date, Ben, on the new plan?
We got it.
5:29:25.
Second.
Minor changes?
Yep, minor changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's proof.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. I look forward to being in front of you guys again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, 93 Kendall Road Business Park. Minor plan modifications are proposed based on various department stakeholder feedback regarding changes to the stormwater system, development scope, and utility minor modifications. Also continued from June 5th, 2025.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Pam, Ben, David, nice to see you. So I was here on June 5th where I presented a series of what we view to be minor modifications to our site plan. Those modifications were, or are being driven by, the collaborative efforts we're having with the various town departments, as well as the water district. I believe during that meeting, you all, or the folks that were here representing the board, were okay with those minor modifications. Additionally, I know David and Jake reviewed our modifications, prepared a review letter. We responded to it. I believe everything has been closed out. During that hearing, there was a question about the width of the sidewalk within the limits of the Kendall Road Improvement Project. I didn't have the answer at the time.
Right.
But I have talked to the engineer of record on that project, and the plan is of the, I think it's like 2,000 feet of sidewalk. It's gonna be six and a half feet wide. However, within 100 feet of Bryant Lane, it does narrow down to four and a half feet due to a conflict, if you look at the next slide, actually, with, sorry, one more. Oh, yeah, this one here. There's like a retaining wall in front of that.
Stone wall there.
Yeah. And so, we're still ADA compliant, so I think the concern was making sure we had appropriate clearances for like a wheelchair or a stroller, and so we have confirmed that.
And that's all checks out. Okay, great. Thanks.
Yes, you're welcome.
Excellent. Okay. Chaz, you have anything?
No.
Steve?
I appreciate you checking that, but when you go by, it looks a lot cleaner. They had cleaned it out with all the brush, so it really looked really narrow, but
Appreciate that, yeah.
Thanks for that.
And I, when I came here today, I looked at it, and I'll make sure it's what we're quoting you. But yeah, it's that like 100 feet that we couldn't get to the five and a half feet.
Nope, happy with that. And there was nothing else, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Want to just build per plans?
Excellent. And I have no problem, so could I get a motion on that?
Motion to approve minor modification in the, we have a plan number, or?
Oh. I don't know if I have one or...
I guess minor modifications and the design changes that Tech Engineering Corp. signed off on on July 14th, 2025. Would that be sufficient?
The latest revision is June 19th.
June 19th, yeah. June 19th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
It's looking good.
Yes.
It does.
Yeah, it is.
When do they, do they plan on getting hot top before the end of the...
For Kendall Road? It's a good question. So I have a meeting with National Grid tomorrow morning. Essentially, and I mentioned this in the last meeting, that is the bottleneck to the pavement, the striping, and the concrete sidewalk. They did, over the last few days, they did move most of the primary feeders to the new poles. There's one pole where the new Commerce Drive cul-de-sac is that still, the old pole still has the primary feeders on it, because they're trying to figure out how to appropriately get power over to the dust garage across the street, and I think a couple of the other homes, without having too much slack in the wire. So there's some optionality that's being discussed in how to solve that, and hopefully we'll get through that. But once that is finalized, then all the low voltage utility vendors that are on the poles need to relocate, and then Verizon can come in and remove the poles, because they're owned by Verizon.
So we're looking at springtime?
So, I, no, my goal is, it's legitimate question, like we had to extend the Mass Works grant a year, but my goal is to really stay on them, so hopefully we can wrap that up this season. That would be my goal. We're trying.
So just depending on Verizon, Mass Electric?
Yeah, yeah. And so I've asked, I talked to Jake, the town engineer, Colin has helped out as well. Like, we're using our, we're leveraging our relationships with the utility companies. I've also asked the town if they can help out as well, so we can kind of tackle it from both.
If they don't, do you plan on like sidewalks being done, or just partially? You're just gonna do it one wrap because of the poles that are still in the sidewalk, right?
Exactly. Exactly. I know.
So it doesn't make sense.
I know. So, I mean, I can keep you posted on...
We appreciate it. I do anyways.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. I can keep Ben up to date.
Right. He can keep us updated.
Sure.
And no, looks great. Thank you. It does. Yep. Thank you for the communication. Alright, next is 50 Old Ting Road. Release performance bond of $80,000.
Yep, this was attached to the ASBIL, town that the board had approved. So now they're just looking to release the bond. I have sent over the letter to Paul Welkum, at the bowling commissioner, and so just need a vote from the board to release it.
Chaz, you have any concerns?
No, I don't, I'm not, okay.
Steve?
You checked the...
Yep, yeah, we had, we had gone over the ASBIL. Everything was, the project was consistent. And I believe the ASBIL had previously passed.
Did I approve the ASBIL?
Yep, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah. Good.
Alright.
Alright, make a motion to release the $80,000 performance bond for 50 Old Ting Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes. Alright. Next, administrative. Approval of minutes for May 15th and June 5th, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 15th and June 5th, 2025, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. New business topics. Topics the chairman did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Chaz?
Be what?
Do you have anything?
Oh, no. I thought we were gonna go right into the Economic Development Committee.
Well, I have something. So I want to talk about this.
Frost Road.
Sure.
Any communication?
Yeah, they've reached out a little bit. I don't, they haven't given any hard deadlines to when they want to come in, but they haven't...
Wasn't our deadline now?
I believe so. They have not reached out quite yet.
Because they haven't done much over there the past probably month and a half.
Yeah. I mean, everything's installed.
Yeah.
The islands, the plantings.
Well, the islands are cut out. Poles are installed, but no curbing's installed, no...
I saw some curbing, actually, this week around the islands, when I drove by there on Monday. But, and there's plantings in those islands.
Maybe send out a notice soon, have them come in and touch base with us next meeting?
Yeah, we have them come in until 21st.
Excellent.
They have not made contact yet.
Excellent. Alright. Economic Development Committee. Chaz, do you have anything?
No.
ADU conversion, conversation with town council.
Oh, I'm sorry, for the Economic Development Committee, I think we were looking for like an appointee from the board. And the committee is basically, it's not gonna be like this. It's gonna be probably once a quarter, and it's not gonna be televised or anything. It's gonna be more of a quorum. And so I think Jeremy was interested, but he's not here.
I was gonna say, you want to hold off on this until our next meeting, and hopefully we have a full board?
Unless, yeah, unless somebody else is looking to jump into...
Just let Jeremy nominate Jeremy?
Second.
Do I have a second? I have a second, okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, looks like it'll be Jeremy.
I'm sure he'll have to show up.
Thank you, Jeremy. Hope you're enjoying your vacation. Alright. Moving on. Select Board request for comment. Yellow House Entertainment License. Anybody here to speak on this?
I am here.
Come on up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mike Allen, CEO of House Premium Cannabis. I wasn't asked to be here this evening, but I knew this was on the agenda for discussion, so I, I wanted to come to answer any, any questions that the board might have. But we went before the Select Board this past month to obtain an entertainment permit, to be able to host events in our parking lot that require an entertainment permit, such as DJ, live DJ, live band, if we want to have live entertainment outside, be able to have food trucks, pop-up events. You know, these are very common types of events for cannabis establishments, particularly around cannabis holidays, like 4/20. I'm not aware of our competitor across the street ever coming before you or the Select Board for an entertainment permit to put on events, but I suspect they probably will follow if, if we, if we're granted one. But we'd like the ability to be able to do that. And when I had this discussion with the Select Board, they wanted to refer, because the planning board is the special permit granting authority, they wanted your input on any issues that you, you were concerned with, that might be relevant to them, whether they, whether they issue a, an entertainment permit for us. So what I talked with them about was the types of events, where we would hold them in the parking lot. We had a map that, that we displayed. We'd be essentially, the activities would be kind of located just outside the building, by the driveway, where our deliveries come in, which is where we essentially have the entertainment activities, and around the building on the sidewalk, which is where the, you know, the pop-up vendors would put up a tent or a table to display different, different things that they have on display. No product would ever be consumed on-site. No product would ever be outside the building or for sale outside the building. There'd be no public consumption. If we had, if the event required the hiring of police detail, we would hire police detail. I'd work obviously closely with the police chief on any event. We would have any traffic control that would be generated, that would require a police detail. We'd obviously have a, a police officer out there for that. So like I said, we would, these events wouldn't just be held willy-nilly. They'd be coordinated closely with the police department, and I'm happy to incorporate any kind of language into the, into our, whether it's our special permit, or, or the entertainment permit itself, that would take these things into consideration. So we, obviously, our goal would have, be to have a community-friendly, safe and secure event that would, you know, promote our business, bring the community together, and be a fun time for, for customers. So happy to answer any, any questions beyond, beyond that. But they were looking for your in, your feedback.
Yep.
Which is why I was here today.
First thing I'm gonna add. Is anybody in the audience here to speak for or against us? Want to take them now?
Sure.
Want you to step up to the microphone right there, introduce yourself.
My name is Donald Carno, 19 Nottingham Road. And traffic, 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 traffic. It's a bad idea. There shouldn't be two pot stores there as it is now. You must have all driven by there. Two people in my family have been in accidents right in front of the pot stores. I see it all the time. The cars come out of the other pot store. There's cones. I know there's a no left turn sign lane. They ignore it. They make the left turns anyways. Myself, I've driven there during the daytime. I had two women run from the restaurant across the street in front of four lanes of traffic, just running across the street. It's a bad idea. It's a bad precedent to set. Middlesex Road is a zoo already. You guys must see it. You live here. If you drive it, you see it, you know it. And if you let them do it, like he said, his competition across the street's gonna want to do it. They're all gonna want to do it with a casino there, two pot stores, a brewery. Now you have another store opening, an oil change place, and something else is gonna go in with the restaurant that's closed, and there's more building going on down the street. The road just can't handle it. It really just can't handle it. And you guys must know that. I'm surprised there's not more people here. I'm actually disappointed. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just, ma'am, are you okay?
You're good? Okay, alright.
There was other people who emailed. I put it in the record for the, on the meeting packets, but people did reach out as well. I don't know if the board wanted to read the emails out loud, or just to themselves, but they, a few residents also just wanted to have their comments heard by the board as well.
Yep. Personally, I'll keep those emails to myself.
Sure.
Chaz, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I'm very glad that you're open. I see a lot of problems with trying to do entertainment outside. This is just comments from our board. We certainly aren't gonna vote on this or anything. It's up to the, to the board of selectmen. Do you have any idea what days you would want to do it? I mean, I, I'm, I'd be surprised if they would just give you an open-ended, you know, every Friday night or whatever. I, I'm...
Yeah, I absolutely can speak to that. So, so really, we've had two events already. We had a ribbon cutting, which was very low-key. We obviously couldn't have, we didn't have an entertainment permit, so we couldn't have entertainment outside in the parking lot. We just had a, a very low-key bingo event outside in the, under a tent in the parking lot. Again, didn't require a, an entertainment permit for it, but it was a fun thing to bring customers in and, and just, again, promote the business and give people, you know, something different than, than what they've, they've been able to experience in the past here in, here in Ting's Borough. So we had, we had that bingo event. We had a couple of pop-up vendors that came in and set up tables, but that was it. We, we wanted to have a DJ, but obviously we couldn't without entertainment permit. We want to be able to have events in the future that would have, you know, we'd be able to bring in a small band, a live DJ outside, to, to have entertainment outside the building. But, but in terms of, you know, it's not, we're not expecting or wanting to have like a huge concert where we'd fill the parking lot. There'd be no available parking. People would park, you know, we, we put ourselves in a situation where we want, we'd want people parking on the, on Middlesex Road, or in neighboring properties. That is not the intent of what we're trying to do here. It's really smaller scale types of events that, that are designed to promote the business and, and really bring the community together. The feedback from the Select Board seemed very positive in that regard, that they wanted, they, they liked the fact that we were trying to promote community and trying to, trying to bring, bring the community together for these types of events. So that's really the goal. It, it's, it's, it's something that is very common in cannabis, in other communities, where you have events like this in, in the parking lot.
So how many of you would you anticipate doing this year?
Yeah, so, so we had this bingo event, low-scale.
You had two events so far.
Yeah, so we, we do have an event that we are planning for October. You might laugh, but it's called Weedtoberfest. And it's, it's, those are the types of things that I mentioned that we would like, we would like the ability to do. So that, that would be probably the last event for this year. And then, and then, you know, 4/20, April 20th is a big, big cannabis holiday, so we'd like to be able to, obviously, next April, be able to do something in the lot then. And then, you know, other, other regular holidays during, during the summer months primarily would be, would be when we would time the event. So timing-wise, we'd probably do one every other month during the warmer weather months. Obviously, the winter time, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking to do anything outside the building. But we've got tons of parking in that parking lot. We, obviously, as I mentioned already, we would hire a police detail. Traffic, really, I, I understand the concerns that, that the gentleman brought up with traffic control on, on the road. We don't have that issue at our location, because most of the traffic, problems that have resulted from the other, our competitor across the street, have been cars coming out from, traveling from the north, coming in, and then trying to make a left turn back out on the Middlesex and cross two lanes of travel. That's when the accidents have happened. Not making a left turn into our parking lot, which is, there, there's no traffic that ever backs up at that, at that intersection. And then when they come out, again, most of the traffic is going north and making a right turn on, on the Middlesex Road. So we've had no accidents at our intersection. And, and I'd hate to be penalized, if you will, for the, for the, for, for the outcomes that have occurred at, at the other location. I feel like that, that shouldn't be held against us, because we haven't had that issue at our, at our location. And, and I'm, like I said, I'm willing to have a, a police officer hired for the event to, to man that intersection, to ensure that we have smooth flow of traffic in and out.
So if you were to hire a band, for example, what would you anticipate the crowd to be size-wise?
Yeah, I, I mean...
So let's say you hire a four-piece band.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna have those four people, that's four parking spots gone. You're gonna have people who are gonna come and want to hear the band, because most bands have followings. That's another 10 spots gone. Have you got that kind of volume in spaces that you can still conduct business at the same time?
Yes. The answer is yes. Most of the people that would come to the event are, are going to be customers. And, you know, we, I'll, I'll use the bingo event as an example, right? We had, we had customers that would come in, they'd play a, play a game of bingo. They'd come in, they'd shop, and then they'd leave. We didn't have a flood, you know, a, a huge number of customers come park, take up parking spots, spend hours there, you know, playing bingo, and then, and take up all the parking for...
With all due respect, Mike, having a band playing is a lot different than having a bingo game.
Agreed. Agreed. And obviously, this is uncharted territory, right? We haven't, we haven't done it yet. So what would I anticipate? I, you know, a couple hundred maybe people in and out, but not in, not there at any given time, I guess, is, is what my expectation would be.
So my expectation would be if someone was to come and listen to a band, they would be there for at least one set of that band, unless they really didn't like them. If they did like them, they would probably stay longer. So I would be concerned about your parking situation for your customers trying to get in and out of there, if you've got a band playing. That's been my experience. I was in the music industry for years. We built up a following. Those people came to see us no matter where we were playing. And I would anticipate that if you get a band that has any kind of a following at all, their fans are gonna be there, and they're gonna be there for the duration of whatever the event is, whether you're gonna have them for two hours, or three hours, or whatever. So that would be my major concern about having that type of entertainment there.
And I would, and I would say, I think it's reasonable to put a condition on, on the permit that if there were, you know, maybe a, maybe a maximum number of people that would be in the parking lot at any given time, might be something to consider, or a restriction on the size of the, the band that, that we would be allowed to have in the, in the parking lot. Something like that could be...
Those are things that the board of selectmen would decide, not us.
Yeah, sure, sure. No, I, I, I understand. But, but your, your concerns are, are legitimate. They're, they're well noted. I, I don't want traffic issues either. I don't want the same things that you're concerned with. That, that's not something we want to have either. So I, safety and security is paramount for me.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Yeah.
Steve?
Yeah. Just for the record, you say you don't want to be penalized. This, but I would never penalize any individual business for what somebody else does. And I know what you're saying about the car accident. It's them, it's them, it's them. Well, it's the area, and you're in that area.
Sure.
And it's highly congested. So I, I don't want you to think that I'd penalize you because of somebody else. That area is high-traffic area. That area is high-traffic area. How many parking spots do you have there?
Sixty, I'm going off memory here. I believe it's sixty-three.
Okay, so you got sixty-three. We'll call it sixty-three. We'll call it sixty-five. You got a tent that you're gonna put up. How big's the tent?
Uh, it's like ten by, ten by, the, the one we used for, for the bingo event was a ten by ten. It was a small ten.
Did you have permits for the bingo event? Did you need one?
We, we didn't re, it wasn't required. It was, it was just a fun kinda activity.
So, you can still do fun things without this permit?
Absolutely.
So, you can have the, you said the trucks come in, pop-up events, right? You had a pop-up, you had two events?
Pop-ups are, are just a vendor coming in, like a supplier.
So, you had it though, right, already?
Yes, yes.
And that's fine without a permit, correct?
Yes.
So, you're looking for entertainment.
Entertainment.
So, entertainment is gonna take up an area, some parking spots, I'm sure. You're not gonna fit all them people under the ten-by-ten tent, are you?
No, but that area wasn't an area that, that had parking.
So, where exactly they're gonna be? That, you're gonna be a.
Where that, that, where the driveway is?
The, the green blocks and the yellow triangle?
Yep.
Right, so, so you take that. There's no parking spots at all there, correct?
Nope.
The, um, and you said you're gonna have vendors there, so you can have vendors now. So, you're talking, what's the entertainment license for music, basically?
Really, yes.
Well.
DJ or a band is, is really what would fall into that category.
I just told you not to penalize you, right, because of the other traffic. But you have no fences. You're gonna have a tent. You're gonna have traffic, full lanes of traffic going by. You're gonna have music. It's gonna be heard on the street because it's gotta be. It's, it's impossible to keep the sound in your property. You're gonna have everybody looking and turning and gawking. And that's gonna create, in my opinion, a problem, like, a big problem. You know, it's not like it's out in the back. It's not like it's, uh, you know, separated. And I, I think like Jazz says, you know, you expect a hundred people there, maybe two hundred people. You got sixty-three parking spots. If just two people came per car, that's a hundred and twenty-six people. If you got the full sixty-three or whatever it is. You have employees that are gonna be parking there, so that takes away more parking. I'm assuming that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you're gonna have more people working if there's bands and entertainment, correct? So, there'd be more cars taken up. So, like Jazz says, if there's four people in the band, most bands I know, they travel on their own, so that's four cars, five cars. You got extra employees, so now you're whittling down on all your parking spots in the area. I just, honestly, I, you know, you did some stuff there, the bingo. I guess if you don't need a permit for that, that's great. People aren't turning for music and love music. I think it really creates a, a real hazard out there with music, you know, playing and stuff like that. So, not our vote, selectmen's vote, but I'm not gonna recommend it to the selectmen. Just not because of the other accidents. It's just a bad area altogether. And from the Pecent Lane Mall backwards and, you know, like, uh, the gentleman said, the casino, that shouldn't penalize you at all. But I think the music and the entertainment and people driving by, what kinda hours of operation are you talking?
To do what, something like that. It, it would be during, during the day.
Which, there's a lot of kids going, a lot of kids driving. I just, I, I don't see it, to be honest with you. You know, if you were more isolated, you know, off-track where people, you know, wouldn't be like, what's that music? Trying to look in, you know, everybody's gonna look and... That's just my own opinion, you know? I think, you know, like you say, you already have stuff. You can have the trucks come in with the food and all that and, you know. I, I just think the entertainment license just adds an element of safety concerns, especially not knowing how many people are coming, where exactly they're gonna go. You're gonna have more people walking through your parking lot. I'm glad you're willing to hire a cop. You were the last time, which is great. But as anybody knows, there's one, two cops, and they're gonna be probably direct in traffic if it's as busy as you say, a couple hundred cars or a couple hundred people. It's gonna be hard to keep everybody safe. Just my own opinion.
True.
Just on the main drag. Mike?
I guess, you know, if we gave you a permit to produce and sell marijuana and entertainment, seems kinda out of the purview of that. Having a band, having music doesn't necessarily align with selling marijuana to me. And I think that the road itself is a busy, it clearly is a, an issue throughout. I mean, if you look at the town Facebook page, there's, there's a lot of issues with this, this whole idea. So, personally, I, I'm not for it.
All right. As you know, I'm probably one of the most straightforward guys you've met in the town.
Sure.
I'm completely against it. Not afraid to tell anybody. And I will also say, like he was saying about, you know, getting your permit and stuff, if we were to present this to the taxpayers when you were coming in for your permit, there would have been an uproar right then and there. It, it's just, it's a very congested area. It's just not a good fit. Once again, you know, I was at your gra, your opening ceremony and everything. Wish you the best of luck. But not only do we gotta watch out for our own taxpayers in this town, everybody else that contributes to all those other stores, it's safety for them too. So, my, my suggestion to the board, personally, to, to select board is a no, so.
Can, can I, can I just, um,
Absolutely.
make another statement that,
Sure.
you know, that this is, I, I want you to all understand that, that this is designed to, like, there's no maliciousness behind wanting to do something like this. This, this is, this is designed to bring.
I don't think anybody on this board thinks it is, Mike. Honestly, I don't think it is.
It's good business. It's good business, but.
Sure, no, but, but bringing community together. My, I mean, one of the things that I've, that I've, I feel like, um, I'll call it my strong suit is because of my background, being part of the community, being, you know, I've joined Rotary, I've joined the Chamber of Commerce. I'm trying to do things to bring community together. And having an event like this, even the, the smaller events that we've already had have, have helped do that. This was kinda just next level, right, is having entertainment outside that would attract more people.
Just look right behind you. It's dividing the community if you look behind you. Right, so just the other side, yeah.
I get it. I, listen, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not minimizing their concern. I, I'm not at all. Um, I, which is why I'd like, if I were to do an event like this and you were to allow it, the town was to allow it, I would have, obviously, a police officer there to, to help mitigate any traffic concerns.
We're not gonna stay all night, 'cause this is just a discussion, but I'll end with, they have two to three police officers at that place across the street.
Yeah.
And it is still uncontrollable when they have big events. And, and just, and let's just take, for instance, the four forty, uh, four-twenty brother that comes up. So, it's, it's just not a good area.
If, if you're looking for an open, an open permit, to me, seems just infeasible. If you were asking for one, you know, four-twenty as a holiday, as, as one celebration to bring community together one time, once a year, like, that, that seems, to me personally, much more achievable. I don't, I can't speak for them, but that's where I stand.
Yeah, and, and, and if I could do that, I would. The, the way your special, uh, your entertainment permit licensing works is it's, it's for a year. It's not set up to do it specific for one event.
That is, if it was on four-twenty, that's when these guys get their most customers in a single day.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, honestly, I, I don't think it's a, a great idea.
Yeah, so, that's our input, Mike. I know you, I thank you for coming and, you know, giving your side. We appreciate it, as do we appreciate the, you know, the town residents that come in against it too, so.
Sure, understood.
All right.
Thanks for hearing me.
Yeah, good luck.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
I do.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
You wanna vote?
I don't think we need to vote, do we?
It was just for, they just wanted a, um, comment, right? So, we, do you want us to take a straw poll or?
Well, we could just summarize your comments, um, and.
Are you able to do that with what you heard? Are you able to do that with what you heard?
Yep.
You're good?
Yep.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Excellent. All right, um, that being said, I guess it's time for you, the board, to take off into, oh, you got something?
Oh, we have the ADU.
ADU conversation.
I'm sorry.
No, don't worry.
Okay. ADU conversation. Whoever wants us, you wanna start it off, start us off?
Yes, so we brought Adam in. Um, as you guys probably are aware by now, uh, the state passed a law, um, where all towns are ADU compliant by right, so you can, up to nine hundred square feet, uh, have an ADU. Um, as we kinda fit it into our bylaw, there is some flexibility that towns have. So, we brought town council in to kinda discuss how this might impact, uh, some of the stats in town and, you know, some of our flexibility as well. So, counsel, if you wanna come in?
Sure, I'm happy to. Um, so, uh, what Ben says is correct. So, I think as most of you probably heard, uh, late last year, I think it was August or September timeframe, the Affordable Homes Act was adopted by the legislature. It, uh, was a five-hundred-plus-page piece of legislation, did all sorts of things. Won't even get into any details beyond the fact that one of the topics it addressed were accessory dwelling units. And, um, consistent with the current administration's push to create housing opportunities, however you may feel about that, pro or con, uh, one of the things the legislature did is it, uh, allowed by right, irrespective of what many municipalities had legislated through their ordinances and bylaws, accessory dwelling units, also referred to in many communities as accessory apartments. You refer to them as temporary independent living quarters, TILQ is the acronym that's used in your bylaw. I know we've had discussion about this before. Maybe not even this iteration of the.
Attorney, can I interrupt you for just one second?
Sure.
Dave, we're all set. Would you, if you wanna take off?
Good to me. Thanks, guys.
You're here for the executive session, right?
I don't believe so.
No.
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you, Anna. I'm sorry, but thank you. Dave, I'm good. Thank you for coming in. Yeah.
Uh, so, the, the objective here was, I think, and I don't wanna speak for the administration or for the legislature, but I think, um, that the objective was recognizing that many communities had, uh, begun to very strictly or stringently regulate where accessory apartments could be developed, or who could inhabit those apartments, or the size of those apartments, or the ability to rent those apartments. Um, the, the state said, we're gonna step in because we think that they're being regulated too heavily, and we're gonna allow these by right in a manner that supersedes efforts by local cities and towns to be more restrictive. Uh, so, uh, what the town, what, what the, what the, the state did, and is now requiring towns and, and cities to do, is through the Affordable Homes Act, it established a baseline of protections. And in the event that you have an accessory apartment, or an in-law apartment, or a TILQ bylaw that is at odds with the state law, state law controls. And the state statute, the new legislation, doesn't direct communities to do anything. It doesn't say that you've got to amend your bylaws. It doesn't instruct cities to amend their ordinances. But in fairness, it puts your building official, your zoning enforcement officer, in a very difficult position. If you have a bylaw on the books that is entirely contradictory, or substantially contradictory, or partly contradictory to what the state law requires, and somebody appears before him or her with an application for an accessory apartment, now that building official has to compare the state law requirements to your bylaw requirements and determine where the conflicts lie and apply your bylaw in a manner that is only consistent with state law, meaning wherever a conflict exists, state law controls. That's challenging for anybody to do. It's challenging for a lawyer to do, let alone somebody who doesn't compare legislation with any sort of frequency. So, what most communities have chosen to do, many of them did so at their annual town meetings, and some have, have postponed the effort and are contemplating doing it at the upcoming fall town meeting, or during the upcoming fall town meeting season, is they've gone and revisited their accessory apartment bylaws, and they've modified those bylaws to eliminate any conflict with the state law. Because again, if a conflict exists, the state law controls anyway. So, it's not like you're giving anything up. You're just making modifications so that your bylaw is consistent with state law. Um, so, what communities have done, many communities, some have simply looked to their town council for assistance, but the regional planning agencies, you have the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, these regional planning agencies have been assisting the communities within their regions in reviewing bylaws. And in fact, I don't know how it was coordinated. I presume that Ben reached out, but, uh, N, NMCOG wrote, uh, a, a memorandum that Ben provided me with a cop, a, a copy of earlier this week, dated April fifteenth, so it was drafted a few months ago, um, addressed to Ben and to the town. And it's a, it's a ten or eleven-page document. And what it does is it provides background, much of what I've just said to you, although it goes into some greater detail concerning the substance of the state law. But then it takes a close look at what you have on the books, specifically the temporary independent living quarters bylaw that you have. And then it makes a proposal, a recommendation. And a recommendation is, quite frankly, what I would probably recommend too, 'cause I've looked at your temporary independent living quarters. Municipalities really have two options when they're looking at what's on the books and comparing it to the state law. If there are very few areas of, of, uh, conflict between the two, you can sort of go through in a piecemeal fashion and say, okay, we're gonna tweak this line here. We're gonna eliminate that line there. But then there are other bylaws in many communities that are so contrary to what the state has established that attempting to go line by line and rework it, you might as well just scratch it and start fresh. And that's essentially what NMCOG has suggested in this instance. That your temporary independent living quarters bylaw is so different from what the state law now requires that what, um, what the Council of Governments has suggested is that you propose at an upcoming town meeting, presumably the fall town meeting, that town meeting vote to, uh, eliminate or abolish the existing temporary independent living quarters bylaw and replace it in its entirety with something different. And they've actually proposed, they've, they've drafted a proposed, um, bylaw for you that would be that different version. It's actually quite comprehensive, maybe even more so than I, I might recommend, more so than some that we've drafted in our, our other communities. Um, but it's very much on point. It addresses everything from definitions that, mostly definitions that are utilized in the statute. It addresses, uh, the extent to which these uses can be regulated. It talks about dimensional standards. It talks about rental use and the extent to which that's permitted or prohibited. Uh, it has parking standards. Um, it has, um, uh, it, it addresses special permits for multiple ADUs within the same lot. Um, talks about what occurs in the case of a pre-existing non-conforming property. And then it has administrative and enforcement provision dealing with how you go about obtaining a permit or an approval to construct or inhabit a, an accessory dwelling unit. So, uh, I've given it a very cursory review. I haven't gone line by line, um, to, to offer any opinion on it. There are several sections where, um, the Council of Governments is simply providing some potential language. I think they've bracketed that language and then sort of left it in your hands to decide whether you wanna adopt that provision or not. So, it does require a closer look, and I would suggest that that's something that you do in the coming month or two. I don't know. Do you know if there's a date for a proposed fall town meeting as of yet?
Not yet.
No, not yet, no.
Okay. So, I have no sense as, as to whether Tingsborough is looking at November or looking at September. If it's September, it's just around the corner and time is tight.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
So, there's currently no, uh, other articles for special town meeting at all. So, Colin is currently waiting if there will be one, frankly. Um, I think that's still kinda possibly up for discussion, uh, depending on what warrants are brought to the town's attention, so.
So, so maybe there's no time constraint. Maybe it's we're aiming for next year's annual, right? Um, again, the reality here is some communities have jumped on this, 'cause they haven't wanted that discrepancy between state law and local bylaw. But the fact that that discrepancy exists doesn't put you really at a disadvantage. It just makes the job a bit harder for your building official. The state law still controls in the event of a conflict. So, um, that would be sort of the rules of the game in the interim until such time as you make modifications to your bylaw. But, um, Ben and I talked about this, uh, a few weeks back. He asked me to be present to sort of go through some of this with you. Again, I can't speak to the Council of Governments memo, 'cause I didn't draft it, but I did give it a review. And, um, again, they've, they've really just summarized for you what I've said. I'll give, I'll give you some examples of, of, um, of inconsistencies, and they're highlighted here. So, it says, uh, "Tingsborough calls accessory dwelling units temporary independent living quarters." Temporary independent living quarters are defined as one or more rooms either attached to or located within the primary dwelling. So, that's a conflict with state law, which allows these, these ADUs to be within a dwelling or entirely detached from a dwelling. Um, it says that they can be up to twelve hundred square feet. That's actually permissible, 'cause that's, um, that's, that's, uh, more forgiving than state law. State law says nine hundred square feet or fifty percent of the square footage of the principal dwelling as a maximum.
So, so we could, we could move our temper, what we consider temporary independent, we could move that down to nine hundred?
You could move it down to nine hundred, correct, 'cause that's what the state law says. But you could also leave it at twelve hundred if you so choose. That's up to you. Um, you require a special permit for temporary independent living quarters. You can't require a special permit any longer for ADUs, their by right. Uh, you require minimum parking for temporary independent living quarters. You can't require, uh, minimum parking, uh, unless you're within, you can't, any, any minimum parking if you're within a half a mile of a transit station. You can only require one space, no more than one space, for anything that is beyond a half mile from a transit station. Uh, and so I can go on and on, but the bottom line is there's lots of areas of inconsistency here. Not your fault. Uh, again, I've seen this in a lot of different communities, because communities have sort of been left to their own devices to determine what's right for them in allowing accessory apartments or temporary independent living quarters. Now that the state stepped in and established. Now that the state stepped in and established standards, you're bound by state law, so, for better or for worse. Um, I know that there's a lot of concern out there, cause I've heard this in many meetings I've attended, about whether this is gonna result in dozens and dozens of new dwelling units coming online in communities. Um, you know, it's too new to really know that, we're coming up on a year, I think it was last, late, late August of last year that this was adopted, so it hasn't even been a year that this has been on the books. Um, it didn't go into effect until February second of this year, so it's only been, uh, what, seven months since it went into effect. Um, you know, having said that, we've certainly seen a bit of an influx, um, what, what we've seen a lot of is those who maybe had opportunities to, um, inhabit, um, uh, areas above garages already constructed, that, you know, were in detached structures and therefore up until now couldn't be accessory apartments. Um, we've seen those individuals now come forward, maybe they came forward years ago and they were denied, we've seen those individuals coming forward and getting permission. Um, we've seen a bit of new construction, but not a lot, um, so it hasn't, we haven't seen a significant influx, um, more in some communities than in others. It's hard, hard to tell how it's gonna affect, uh, Tinsborough, but, you know, for better or for worse, not much we can do about it, the legislature has spoken and we're bound by it.
Just one question if I may. The state law says nine hundred, we had one similar, I think it was eight hundred way back when, and we decided as a board, we went to twelve hundred square feet. Could we keep it, the nine hundred state law, and then special permit for bigger than that? You know, for that extra three hundred feet, if somebody, you know, we could, I don't wanna say eliminate a building, an accessory dwelling unit if it didn't have setbacks or whatever, but could something like that work? So we have, you know, if somebody has nine hundred square feet, they're good, if they wanna go beyond that, they come to the board for not a special permit? What would you call it?
No, it can, it, it, I think it can be a special permit, so.
So for the extra?
Right, so we've had a few communities that have said, okay, what's the baseline protection, and they've drafted a bylaw to provide that baseline protection, what can be done as of right. But then they've gone on to say, and even, even the council of governments has suggested in their form document, that, that their draft bylaw for Tinsborough that I alluded to before, uh, I gave the example that they've said, if you wanna have more than one ADU, you can do that by way of a special permit. You're allowed one by right, but if you want more than one, that's a special permit process. Well, I think the same rule would apply to exceeding the nine hundred square feet. Uh, I will say that, you know, we, we recommend a process where, once you've drafted what you think it is that you wanna adopt, we vet it with the state before you even bring it to town meeting, and you've seen this in other contexts, you've seen it in the MBTA communities, just section three A zoning, where, um, E O H L C, the state agency that has some oversight of that program, will review and provide feedback before you bring these to town meeting. Because the problem with this sort of new legislation, whether it be MBTA communities, or ADUs, or whatever may next, whatever the, 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 the next thing may be, is that it's so new, it's a moving target when it first gets adopted. So, you know, discussions that were had about MBTA communities, and what you couldn't, couldn't, couldn't do, six months after that legislation was adopted, those conversations are completely different now, and things that were acceptable then are not acceptable now, and things that weren't acceptable then, they've, they've budged a bit on and are more acceptable now. So, I had discussions, um, with the state maybe six or seven months ago, just after February. Uh, I, one town in particular that I represent wanted to do that, wanted to allow by special permit larger ADUs. And at that time, it was acceptable, I don't know whether they've moved that goalpost at all, so I would confirm that, um, but I suspect that they haven't. The baseline protection is nine hundred square feet.
All right.
Can, can we as a town, I don't know if it's in there or not, because I have a, like you, it's, it's so large. Can we as a town, put that they can't have a full basement in it, cause I mean, you take a nine hundred square foot dwelling, put a full basement under it, it's now eighteen hundred square feet in the blink of an eye.
Yeah, so, so it's a, it's a fair question, um, certainly you could, you could limit it, the, the, the square footage is defined as per the statute. So, certainly you could prohibit the basement from being used as finished square footage, because you've got this nine hundred square foot floor area cap.
But how would that be enforced?
That's the issue, right, so that's the issue with any sort of development, so I don't, I don't know if you can prohibit basements. My concern is that that's, now you're starting to go beyond the scope of zoning and getting into building code issues. Um, so I don't know the answer to that question, certainly I can, I can vet that with the state and determine whether that would be something that would be acceptable.
Yeah.
As well as garage and lofts.
What's that?
Garages and lofts above garages would be another.
Yeah.
Area of square footage additions.
Right, right, I suspect the state's answer's gonna be, cause it often is, that that's an enforcement issue like anything else. Because I can always, I can, I can, I can rebut any proposal by saying, yeah, but you could violate the restrictions. Any special permit that comes before you, in which you put five pages of conditions, you could say, how do you enforce any of these? If you, eh, eh, how do we know you're not doing this, you, you're, you're, you're operating a business and you can't do X, Y, and Z, how do we know you're not doing that? How do we know, when you permit a home, when the bill, a building permit issues, and it's a four bedroom home with a study, and has a four bedroom septic system, how do you know that as soon as they move in, they're not without a building permit, putting a closet in that study and turning it into a bedroom, and now it's a five bedroom home? You don't have any right to knock on the door and march in.
Right.
So it becomes an enforcement issue, and generally the state has not been receptive to us saying, well, because it's an enforcement issue, we wanna avoid having to pursue that enforcement by prohibiting it upfront, they've said, no, you can't do that. Which puts you sort of in a catch twenty-two then, because then how do you, how do you know that they're, I, I get it.
Just like you saying that you could potentially go forward and ask to have another one on your property.
Right.
I mean, are they looking to turn every town into a city?
I won't comment on that.
Well, it just seems like the towns are losing their voice completely.
I have a question, um, so you're mentioning that you could, theoretically, it's only if it contradicts, but in this case where it does contradict, could you have them as two different entities where, basically N M C O G is kind of borrowed language from the state to make us compliant, you know, on the ADU front? But could we have the flexibility to keep the T I L Q and basically have it like where that is a special permit aspect, so that town still holds some flexibility and maintain, like if you want to go to twelve hundred square feet, we would keep the T I L Q, and then be able to have the flexibility to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so I looked at that, um, because I think you had referenced to me that there was a potential of keeping both, I, I think it's incredibly confusing, that's just my, my, my two cents based on experience, that if I'm an applicant and I want an accessory apartment, and the answer is well, you have two bylaws you can follow, if you can meet this one, great, that's by right. If you can't, then you can go under this one, only because it's not like they mirror each other, and the only difference is T I L Q is, uh, is, is three hundred more square feet. T I L Q goes on for pages with all these restrictions that I just referenced, I think it's confusing, could you legally do it? I suppose that you could, and you could point them in that direction, um, you know, if somebody comes in for a T I L Q, and they come in saying it's a T I L Q, but all the, all the, all the characteristics of their proposal would really make them a qualified, like protected ADU as that term is used, and you deny a special permit, well then you put yourself in a real difficult position, because that denial's gonna be overturned on appeal. Cause even though they called it a T I L Q, they meant to call it an accessory apartment or an ADU. So, that's the challenge there, so I, I, I can't say that I would recommend that, just based on my experience trying to apply this sort of stuff. Um, but if that was, if, if you thought that that was politically what would pass muster, if you think it would be a disaster to attempt to persuade town meeting to eliminate the T I L Q, and be an easier sell to have them adopt something separate, uh, I'm not gonna tell you, you can't do it, just think it's a bit messy.
I just, I think you're right, it's confusing, I think what we do is we look at the bylaw, we throw in our suggestions, if we wanna add the three hundred, be, you know, at one point, we thought twelve hundred was reasonable. I think, you know, then we have council look at it, and like he says, gets approval from the state, so I think you keep it as one, you don't want two.
And, and there may be some provisions of your, of your T I L Q, and I don't know that the council of governments went quite this far, but there may be provisions of your T I L Q bylaw that you could incorporate into the ADU bylaw. So, um, you know, you have the ability to restrict design to a certain extent, I mean, you can't do things like restrict the nature of occupancy, um, but you can restrict design to a certain extent, so long as the nature of the restriction is not unreasonable, and is not effectively preventing these from being.
In the height still, I would imagine, right?
What's that?
Cause we have a height.
You can regulate height, correct.
You keep all the same building codes, correct, except for the.
So, so, building code, yes, but I think, I, I think you mean zoning code.
Zoning code, you, you can't.
Building code for sure, there's nothing about this, all there's the building code requirement, so, from a zoning code perspective, you have the ability to apply the same standards as you would apply to other structures, but it has to be equivalent to other structures. So if an access, if it's an accessory building on the site, you have to apply the accessory building setbacks, the accessory building heights, if it's gonna be, um, so, so you just have to be sure that you're.
So we could set the heights on these detached.
You can.
Okay, so that's something I wanna go with.
Set a different height on, you know, if you're allowed thirty feet in the zone, you can say it's only, can be ten feet high?
You have to treat the ADUs the same way that you would treat other structures within the zone.
Right, so you really can't change the height, is what I'm saying, cause we already have that.
You, if, if it's, if it's a, if it's the existing building, you would have to apply, apply the principal structure height limitations. If it's accessory, then you could apply the requirements for accessory, so long as they, as applied, wouldn't be unreasonable and prevent the construction. If you have some accessory by, uh, accessory structure bylaw provision that effectively is meant to make everything a shed, and says nothing can be more than, higher than six feet, you can't apply that, because nobody's gonna build a six foot tall accessory apartment.
You, you could, let's just say, you, you, you could set it to twenty feet instead of the thirty.
Correct.
Whatever we are, two, six, thirty-six.
Correct.
Right, I'm just, I think you see where I'm going, I, I just see these things becoming much larger than what they were intended for.
Now, what about deed restrictions, like currently, our T I L Q has a deed restriction component to it.
It's gone because of this ADU is by right.
It's by, it's by right, you can't restrict the, the nature of the occupancy, so you can't say that the main structure has to be occupied by an owner occupant. Um, you can't, you can't say that the accessory structure, you can't require either structure to be occupied by somebody who owns it, they can both be rented if, if they so choose. Um, you can't require any relationship, familial relationship, blood relationship, as, these are the things that were fairly common even, even ten years ago.
Right.
Um, there's been a movement away from that, which is why this term accessory apartment is used more than in-law apartment. I saw it, you know, twenty years ago when I started practicing, I think it was an in-law apartment, needed some blood relation, and then we moved away from that to accessory apartments, and now we have this concept of ADUs.
Do they have anything in there that says they can't, like, actually sell this little parcel?
Yeah.
No.
I thought they, wasn't?
Did they think about any of this before they, that's, that's, it's, it's legitimately turning you into a city?
I, I, I've seen, I've seen a few instances where effectively, the, 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 it still, still needs to be accessory, right? So you can't, you can't create what amounts to two principal dwelling units on the same site, draw a line down the middle, and then sell one separately by way of a deed, because now it's.
Can you condo it?
Yeah, condo it, so that's what I've seen.
Again, it's just, it's crazy.
So that's what I've seen done.
I think.
It's rural in small towns.
I heard, well, I thought that you couldn't condo it, it was in the language, it's not.
No.
No, we've, we've seen it done on a few occasions.
I, just.
And that's legal.
As a point of reference, and as a real estate agent and dealing with it, like, we have to recognize that there is a huge supply and demand issue. And this is.
Yeah, but it's also the developers that are, and you and I will go about this round and round from, from now till I die, Mike. There's also the, the developers that are coming out of the Boston area that don't wanna pay the big money down there, have pushed their legislators on us small towns people, and they're gonna cripple us when it comes to our services, schools, police, fire, everything.
But you're still getting tax revenue from these.
It doesn't outweigh children going to the school.
Potentially, I mean, we're, we have birth.
What's it cost to send one child, what's, what's it cost to send one child to school? Like I said, I'm not gonna get into this, but it's, it's probably close to twenty thousand dollars.
I just, I'd like to point out that there, you know, that, to buy a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, to buy a two bedroom condo in Tinsborough right now is five, six hundred thousand dollars, so, it, this, this opens up a, an avenue for people that can't afford that, potentially can rent it. I understand that it changes.
Right, we're longer in dip, we own it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's horrible for small towns.
Anything else to add, anybody?
Yeah, so, you said this entire document's five hundred pages that the state passed.
Yeah, the, the, the entire piece of legislation, there's only, there's literally one page that addresses ADUs, it's, it's, so, so it's not five hundred, there, there's one page, it's, it's incredibly simplistic, since then, the state has adopted accompanying regulations, the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities, it used to be D H C D, now it's E O H L C. Uh, they've adopted, uh, I'm looking at them, five pages of single spaced regulations that fill in a lot of the blanks, because the legislation is all of a page, double spaced, size fourteen font, so there's not a whole lot. Um, it was pretty simple, it defined accessory dwelling unit, and then it said, they're allowed by right, you can't unreasonably restrict them. And then, you know, what does it mean to be allowed by right, what does it mean to unreasonably restrict, that's all fleshed out in the regulations.
And you said that you had not really looked at this N M C O G document?
So I've looked at it, I've read the whole thing, I just haven't gone through, they propose at the, at the end of the document, they have, uh, so if you, if you've got it in front of you, when you scroll down to page four, you have a whole bunch in red that's stricken through, that's your, that's your existing bylaw. They just cut and pasted and then struck through it, saying, we just recommend that you delete this all, and then starting at the bottom of page six, they've got page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, page ten, page eleven, is all their proposal for new language for a bylaw. So it's a fi- a five page bylaw, single spaced, it's a much smaller font, that, that, uh, the council of governments is suggesting that you adopt. I haven't gone through that line by line to say, is this appropriate, is that appropriate, I gave it a quick review, nothing jumped off the page at me as being unreasonable or unlawful, which makes sense, because N M, N M C O G is doing this for all of its communities, and they're proposing similar bylaws elsewhere, I'm sure. Uh, and they have, what, seven or eight other communities, so, it, it looked okay generally, but there were some, there were some questions that needed to be, that were essentially being deferred to you, this is a form bylaw that I'm sure they've crafted, and so they have a lot that's in brackets, which as a drafter, that typically tells me it's a, it's an option I'm providing to my client to say, look at this, tell me whether you like what I put in brackets, or this is for future discussion. So, that's a starting point, but that's not just, you know, send this to town meeting and adopt it, there's, there's a more of a discussion to be had.
So, you said page one through five, we, we start with page six, so there's stuff.
Six through.
I printed out, so I'll, I'll create a document where you guys can like add your comments, I printed out the proposed, like what they have proposed essentially. Um, I, but I, I was thinking I could just create a Google document where you guys have access to it, and you can just write in comments or something like that, and we can work on it further.
So, pages one through five, it's not completely all, you know, redacted and taken out, there was stuff that they think is okay?
So I think what you're looking at, can I, can I see what you're looking at?
I gave them the, they've stripped, so basically the first part is our current T L U, T I L Q bylaw? That's just stricken out, so I just, yeah.
The whole thing, okay, so that was my question.
You just got the last piece of it, the, the two, the two pages before this have a lot more that looks like this, it's the rest of your T I L Q bylaw.
Cause I got that open here, so they want the whole thing.
Yeah.
They're suggesting the whole thing be stricken, which again, uh, looking at it, I, I, that's not my preference, because I think it's an easier sell to town meeting to say, we're not, we're not starting with something new you've never seen before. You've adopted this previously, it's been on the books for years, we're making this tweak and that tweak, that's an easier sell to town meeting voters, cause it looks like less change.
Yeah.
The problem is, your T I L Q bylaw is fairly comprehensive, not as comprehensive as what's being proposed, but it's fairly comprehensive. And so much of it is contrary to what the new state law requires, so going through it and trying to strike everything that's contrary is gonna be, the finished product is gonna be every other line, or every line, every, two out of every three lines is stricken, and you're squeezing words in and squeeze, it's gonna look really messy. So, I tend to agree with, uh, with the council of governments on this one, that I think it's better to just strike it in its entirety, explain to town meeting that it doesn't comply any longer with the state law, and that what you're proposing for town meeting adoption is something that does comply with state law, that has been proposed by the regional planning agency that has done this for many other communities, and by the time it gets there, will have been reviewed by town council, and hopefully that'll give them some comfort.
And, and on something like this, we'll go through it, and if we wanna make changes, then they'll run it by you, like, whether to add three hundred square feet, whether it's a meeting or not, you know?
Right, so I think that we can do this a lot of different ways, and I'll defer it to the chair and to, to Ben, but I think that, um, you know, you can take a look at this and get your comments to Ben. Ben can, you know, ask for this in a word format maybe from N M C O G, so that you can then, um, uh, make some adjustments, red line changes to it, send it back over to me, I can attend another meeting, again, we, we got a lot of time, if this isn't gonna be advanced until next May, um, then you can schedule your public hearing sometime in March or April of next year, we've got, we've got seven, eight months to.
Yeah, but we don't wanna sleep on this.
Yeah.
Definitely this, cause this is gonna be pretty extensive here.
In the interim, people can apply, or, I've carte blanche to build ADUs?
So what, what they're likely gonna do, is they're gonna, if they wanna build an ADU, they're gonna come to your building inspector, and they're gonna say, here is a plan, uh, here's a building permit application and a plan for a nine hundred square foot ADU that's detached, and your building inspector's gonna look at the bylaw and say, okay, you can't have it detached, he's gonna say, who's living there, and they're gonna say, I don't know, whoever I want to live there, and he's gonna say, okay, you can't do that under the bylaw. Um, and he's gonna go through and determine all the things that are not complying with the bylaw, and then he's gonna have to say, yeah, but none of those things comply with state law, and so you get your building permit.
And there's no way to mandate that they build it on a slab versus a foundation?
Not, not, I, I, my, I, I will research that question, but my, my sense is that the answer is probably.
Doesn't seem like the state gave the towns too much.
They didn't.
Availability, put any input into this whatsoever.
That was the intent.
Which, that's what bothers me.
Yeah.
So we c- we currently have an application before us for our T I L Q, twelve hundred square foot T I L Q.
We do.
But we can still hear that, correct?
Right, so, so.
So they weren't twelve hundred, we can hear that.
Because they went twelve hundred.
And we had them. Advised them that, about the, the, uh, the law and everything, and they were like, we want twelve hundred square feet.
Okay, so, under, under what you currently have on the books, and I haven't seen that application, so I'm gonna refrain from officially commenting, but my sense is, if they're subjecting themselves voluntarily to the T I L Q process for a twelve, twelve hundred square foot, if they come, they could probably make an argument to the building commissioner if they just knocked three hundred square feet off, that they wouldn't have to go through any of that process.
Right.
We had one.
They've chosen not to do that, so.
We had one in the fall that applied, Wilson, and I remember telling him, if he wants to wait, he's all set, but he went twelve hundred square feet too.
So now, I, I'm glad you brought that up, so now this, this person come in and did this, they did the twelve hundred on this side of their house, they got room to do a nine hundred over here, they can?
No, they'll carry it.
And that too.
You need a special permit?
No, 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 there's nothing to say.
I don't know that they can, so it's tricky because the, the first, the, the first TILQ isn't technically an ADU, right? Because it doesn't, but if you structure the ADU bylaw the way you're proposing, which is you're actually allowing larger ADUs by way of a special permit, and they've obtained that special permit, um, although they got it for a TILQ, I, I think it will be tough for them to argue that they're entitled to the TILQ, but then they're also entitled to the ADU. And we can maybe try to find a way to work some language into the bylaw that gets adopted that reflects the fact that if they already have an accessory dwelling unit, even if it doesn't strictly comply with the definition, but is a, is, is a, is a secondary dwelling unit within the same site, that they then don't qualify for an ADU. I, I don't think the intent of the law, and I don't think anything in state statute would require you to permit, um, multiple, what amount to ADU. Certainly the law is clear that by the strict definition of ADU, you're not required to allow more than one, which is why one of the provisions that's in this draft bylaw is if you want a second or a third or a fourth, you can get them by way of special permit.
So we'll have to, we'll have to be looking into all that stuff too.
Yeah.
So, this is, we'll have to stay on top of us.
All right, anybody else have anything for Adam for this?
So just real quick, Ben, you've got this five page, um, state document that sort of maps out exactly what the definition of the one page is?
Basically, yeah.
Okay, because I'd like you to share that with the board as well, so that we're all looking at the, all the same information here.
Absolutely.
The, the, the state has created a page, if you, if you literally go to Google and, and Google Massachusetts ADU, your first response, because I did it just now, because I wanted to pull up the page, because I knew I could click on the link quickly, so I Googled Mass ADU. The first response is, um, this website they've created, and their website has some plain English explanations, but it has links to the original legislation, has links to that five page regulations that I've been referring to, it's all, all the links are right there. So you can gain access to it easily, Ben can certainly print it out for you, but it's, it's easily accessible.
Okay, perfect. Everybody good with that?
Thank you. Yep.
All right. Yeah, we're going to be going into executive session, um, I will be recusing myself, so, everybody have a great night and I'll see you and I look forward to talking with you, Adam.
You have to, you have to take a vote to go into executive session.
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to go into executive session?
Please, please read the exemption on your, um-
You want to read that, Ches?
Yes. So exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, uh, Michael Ferris, Ed Al versus Tingsborough Planning Board, civil document, document number two, four, eight, one, CV zero, two, two, five, seven.
Only to come out to adjournment? We need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm out on this.
You're out on this?
I've got nothing to do with Ferris.
Okay, you're out on this.
So we, they, they can vote on that, executive session, right?
They, you can go vote, you can vote.
Um, they, they can vote in the executive session, but we need to maintain a quorum to go into executive session, so.
Well, we don't have one.
Um,
Two of us.
So, so why is Michael out on this?
I, I sat in on one meeting of Ferris and-
So that's fine, you don't have to have sat in the meetings, it just, you need to be a board member that doesn't have a conflict. So, sorry to keep you here, because-
Do you have any conflicts?
You can vote to go into executive session.
Do you have any conflicts with that?
They can all vote to go in.
I like me, it's-
They, they can all vote to go in, and then I need to maintain a quorum with an executive session, so I need to run.
Yes, you can all, you can all vote to go into executive session.
Ferris is, yeah.
Yeah, he's in a butt at his property.
Ask him.
Yeah.
All right.
We can roll, we can roll call to go into an executive session, so.
Well, 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 hold on. Because we can't go into executive session and then immediately lose our quorum, because then we lose the executive session, so let's not go into executive session yet.
Okay.
Dave, you have a conflict here?
I do.
Did you recuse yourself previously?
I have, but I sat in for nothing.
I did, yeah.
And Michael, do you have a conflict?
I, I'm aware of one, but I'm, uh, at a building at three fifty-two Middlesex Road, that-
Uh, is that the address? It's one thirty.
I don't understand how that abuts, I understand that.
All your father's property is across the street where the drainage and everything's going into? I'm, I'm just the chairperson here, I'm just saying, I'm just pointing out to our attorney right now, so that we don't get jammed up.
Yeah, so, so, so we would never get jammed up because conflict of interest law requirements are personal to the individual, so I wouldn't get jammed up, your board wouldn't get jammed up, you'd get jammed up.
I would recuse myself. Recused. I, I, I want nothing to do with it.
Well then, we can't have the executive session.
There you go.
Oh, I think you're saying like, it's not a conflict of interest unless you say so, correct?
Well, I'm not, I have no interest in involving myself in any type of conflict of interest and such, so. If it potentially does conflict, I don't.
Well, Adam, are you saying it doesn't if he's the-
Well, I'm saying, first of all, at an open public meeting, I'm not going to issue a conflict of interest determination to a single individual, because that's the only way that I can issue a determination, and I won't do that publicly. What I'm saying is, the conflict of interest law requirements are specific to the individual, the individual has to make the decision for him or herself. I don't know enough about this, this was just thrust upon me that maybe your father's property is low, at, at first glance, your father's property being located in proximity to this property does not create a conflict of interest under the conflict of interest law, but we haven't had a chance to discuss this, so if you're uncomfortable with this and you think you may have a conflict and you're choosing not to participate, that's fine, except if that's the case, then we can't, we can't have this executive session because we need a quorum to go in and we need a quorum to stay in executive session.
That is an accurate assessment of how I feel. Uncomfortable, do not want to proceed.
Okay, all right, so we'll have to reschedule the executive session to some future date. We'll talk afterwards, because we do have some time constraints here as to when we need to accomplish this, which is why we're trying to do it tonight. So, um, it can't, it can't wait another, another week, another month. Your meeting in two weeks though, right?
Yeah.
Um, so let's talk about whether we can make that meeting work and whether we'll have a quorum present, so.
We should, vacations are over.
Right?
Yeah, um, I may not be here on the next meeting.
Okay.
But, I'm planning on being here, so let me just say that.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.